Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled second meeting for the month of February. This is our city council meeting. I call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And as always, at the second meeting, we will start with the youth of the month. We have Mr. Joe Jansen, and our youth is Tori Chase.
Thank you, John.
Well, I'm happy to nominate Victoria Chase as the student of the month for February. Though Tori is a new student at Wapaka High School, she has not only met the challenges of fitting into a new place, but she did it by getting straight A's while taking advanced courses such as chemistry, physics, pre-calculus, AP Statistics, and perhaps the most important, definitely the most interesting, world history.[65.22][65.22](Laughter). As Tori's world history teacher (Laughter), you saw that coming. Okay. I've seen Tori continue to excel in this course, showing skill in writing and understanding complex subjects. She has a broad range of interests and knowledge that enable her to be one of our top students. So, again, I'm very pleased to nominate Victoria for the student of the month. Congratulations.[93.04][93.04](Applause).
And the certificate is awarded to Tori Chase for Outstanding Youth of the Month Award, City of Wapaka.
Does she want to give a little speech before we have her do the...
I'm gonna say no.
Pledge.[115.22][115.22](Laughter). She'll lead us in the pledge, though?
She certainly will, yes.
We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise and face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks for coming to. Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks, John. Okay, let's move on, then, to the clerk's open meeting statement.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you. And would you also take role?
Ryan Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Vensky.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Perchatski.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Okay, and you have the consent agenda in front of you, and Sandy, you had one handout under the consent?
Yes, under number six, Consent Agenda, letter A, Monthly Reports, the Development Director's Report for January 2015 was distributed.
Okay. You've heard the one addition to the consent agenda. Are there any items that council or staff would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, where you would vote on those items individually, or item individually? Anybody? If not, we would entertain a motion to approve that consent agenda with the one addition.
So moved.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that we approve the consent agenda with the one addition that Sandy brought up. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under Regular Agenda, Sandy, we just had one right tonight that just got handed out?
Yes, under number 10, Presentation on Oz Equa Park Project, a letter from Connie Abbott was distributed.
Okay, again, you've had the one additional item. You have the regular agenda in front of you. If there's nothing else, we would need a motion, then, to approve the regular agenda.
Make a motion we approve the regular agenda.
Second?
Motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we approve the regular agenda with that one addition. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under announcements, we have a letter or notification from Yellow Book Wapaka for Shawno County's Wisconsin Directory, and that's on page 172, 173 of your packet. And that's just for informational purposes only. And then we also have a congratulations card from Knightberry Title Group for the Grand Facelift Award recognition, which is also informational, and you can find it on page 174 of your packet. Public input, this is a time where we ask anybody in the audience that, or public that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, if there's anybody in the audience, or, for that matter, council or staff that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to department announcements and reports. Kathy, you're always first, so...
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Just to let you know that the auditors are currently in the office today and tomorrow. They're still up there working on the fieldwork for the 2014 financial statements. There was a delay in presenting you the January financial information in your packet because I'm still working in '14. Apologize. My office is also looking at the 2015-16 capital financing plan, bringing to council the resolution to go to the State Trust Fund to just fund the 2015 projects. By doing that, I believe we'll be able to save money on interest costs and not going out for the full dollar amount that was authorized by council. So, the 2016 projects will be either brought back later this fall or part of the 2016 budget. Last week, I attended the Ellers TIF and Economic Development Conference and received update on information on the TIF laws and some borrowing updates, and we'll be bringing back some other information to the council probably later this spring on maybe using Ellers as a review to look at our debt and our financial policies and help out with some of the tips. So, that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, let's move on to the library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I was delighted today to go to Madison, such a beautiful drive, on a very chilly day, but I was able to meet with our legislators. So, I met with Representative Kevin Peterson and Senator Luther Olson, and we were all talking about library services and how important they are to our communities. So, there were a group of 200 library supporters there in Madison. So, we were there en masse, and I think we really made an impression. Our seed library is opening next month in March, and you can check our website for details about that. Our annual report is ready for submittal. We just need to have our library board approve it, and then we should be able to bring it to the council in April. Youth Art Month exhibit opens next Monday night, and there will be a reception that evening, so if you want to attend, certainly to support the youth and our art in our area. We have movies our next three Thursdays. We're finishing up our film series for February this Thursday and next Thursday, and these are all filmed on location in color. And then in March, we're going to be showing on Golden Pond on the 5th of March, so we're kind of one more on filmed-on-location color movie. Children's programming resumed in February, and you can check our website for all the details. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Awesome. Thanks, Peg. Any questions, comments for Peg? All right, let's go on to Development Director Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to address. Just a reminder to all common council members that the Ordity project that is being handled by East Central Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission along with Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation is doing their public unveil on February 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Oshkosh Convention Center. Again, this is focusing on the regional manufacturing economy, so there'll be representatives there that will be able to address any questions, and there'll be a presentation. They're also doing a keynote speaker from an individual from Southwest Michigan First, which is an organization that's kind of in a similar instance with manufactions focusing on a regional approach. And then, secondly, I wanted to just, you know, give the council an update. My department will be doing more of a mobile office in March for the visioning project we have going on from Main Street. We're at a point right now where we're gonna be seeking public input on the three alternatives that the Vision Committee has come up with. So, in order to get as much public input, I'm gonna be hopefully working with a landowner for a vacant storefront on Main Street and utilizing that space for about a week for people to actually come in, take a look at all different types of presentation boards that will have the project status updates or everything, and get some more public information and comments that will be brought back to the Vision Committee probably late March, early April. And then we're hoping to finish up that project later April. I'm looking at hopefully a joint meeting between the Plan Commission, City Council, and the Visioning Committee for that.
Awesome. Thanks, Brennan. Henry might be bringing this up, too, but we're still looking for a council person. I'm not gonna be able to attend next Monday night, East Central's presentation, so if we could get a volunteer or two to go with Henry.
Where is it at?
It's at the Oshkosh Convention Center.
Yeah, we'd probably leave town maybe 5:30. It starts at 6:30?
I'll be meeting, I have a meeting before that I have to go to, but I'll be meeting individuals there, yes. It starts at 6:00.
So, if we have anybody that would like to do that, let Henry or Brennan know. That would be great. And they want some elected officials there, so we should at least send one if we can. All right. I hate to force Paul Mayo to go to another meeting, but (Laughter) we'll see. All right, let's go on to John Edelbeck, Director of Public Works.
Okay, we've got a number of trainings and different things scheduled. We have our annual safety training, which we co-train with Wyegah, is set for next week. We have our chili cook-off set for the middle of March, Public Works Department, our 19th Annual, by the way. We have to, we will be scheduling our first aid CPR training shortly. Tina is getting some prices from a couple of different vendors. We will be scheduling our annual hearing testing, and those are a requirement of Department of Safety and Public Services. And we will be utilizing our workers' comp provider for some other safety training and aspects that we get for free as a part of that provider. We will not have to pay for those. As you know, we awarded the sewer use ordinance update, and I don't know if you've heard me talk about our mercury reduction program. That's required by the DNR, and that'll be part of the sewer use ordinance, which will really be a nice improvement to get both of those done, because we do have to modify ordinance for the DNR this next year for mercury removal. We have sent out requests for proposals for the Capacity Maintenance and Operation Manual, which is our sewer operating manual. And again, that's another requirement by the DNR to be completed by August of 2016. So, we'll be getting those back here shortly. 2015 road program will go out this week. We have a bid date set for, I believe it's the middle of March, maybe March 17th. We'll be taking it to the council meeting shortly after that, or maybe it's March 12th, and the council meeting's the 17th. That must be it. So, we've identified three contractors that we will put that, we will send them the plans and specs. We advertise in the paper. This is, we did get an LRIP grant, which is a DOT, Local Road Improvement Grant, so we're required to follow those regulations, and that's identified in the notice, and that's a Class II notice, so it'll be in the paper the next two weeks. We have a public information meeting set for the road program for this year. It's on Wednesday, February 25th, next week, here in the council chambers at 5:30. We either mailed or hand-delivered, but we mailed to all the owners of the properties affected by the Fulton Street Hillcrest project, and then we also are hand-delivering to any tenants, because there's both. I can't just send a letter to California, and then the tenant doesn't know about the information meeting. So, we really try to reach out to these property owners, owners and tenants. I do have two properties that I will be sitting down with. They are, we would be assessing them for curb and gutter installation per our city ordinance, so I'll be meeting with those property owners and discussing that. And with that, then, we will be having our assessment, special assessment hearing process will be coming up, and we'll be working with Sandy the next few months here for notices in the paper and such. We'll include those curb and gutter work, and then all our sidewalk repair work will be part of that. A few other things that we're working on, our consumer confidence report for a water utility, which should probably be repaired, prepared in the next week or two, as soon as we get the data on 2014 from the DNR, and they put that up on their website. Once we get that, then we can create that report, basically a report card. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, John. Any questions or comments for John? Thank you. Let's move on to Parks and Recreation, then, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. My report's on page 70 of your packet. Today, we met, staff met with school administration, Carl Hayek, Carl Legabret, and John Kneer from Park Board to finalize layout of soccer fields. Glenn Flatoff, the superintendent, or the facility superintendent, was also in that, and we'll work towards moving those to the high school this year. That should all be set probably within the next month here. We kind of want an opportunity, well, I'm hoping snow will be off the ground in the next month. We want an opportunity to go out there and really lay everything out and see how it'll work. I'll go back to a couple of weekends ago. I just want to report on the big weekend we had, the weekend of February 7th. We had a youth family trivia night on that Friday night, which brought in a group of people on Friday nights that we typically don't get at the rec center. We were excited to have that. We had parents and mainly middle school-aged kids come in and participate in a youth trivia night that Rocky Mondello from the middle school put on. We had about 63 participants and are looking to do that in the future, so we thought that went fantastic. We also had our Winter Rec Fest, and that went very well as well, especially with about an inch of snow on the ground. Fireworks went great. Hundreds of people, maybe over 1,000 people throughout the day from 2:00 to 8:00, were at the hill, so that was a big, big success, and we'll look to do that next year. Program guide, you guys will be seeing middle of March our program guide for summer and spring. We do do two, one in August, one in March, so that'll be coming out to you. Our Augie Austin Jim floor bids are due February 23rd, so that is this next Monday at 2:30, and then you'll be seeing information on that at the March 3rd council meeting. We are doing a tree drops, fish sticks project, which is kind of building on what we did last winter with some help from Johns and Rogers crews in the Public Works Department. We're looking to kind of beef up the three spots we did last year in Shadow Lake, the first week in March, depending on snow and what their crews can do. We are planning for the home show, March 26 through the 29th. That has been moved to the rec center to the, or from the expo, and that is because hockey tournament schedule kind of forced the expo to request a different date, and a lot of the vendors couldn't make that date, so we're doing it at the rec center this year. We want to make that a success. We are working on a mentoring program that we're gonna start up September, October of this next coming school year. We're working on it with a chat through Theta Care. It's a group that meets monthly, kind of on wellness issues in the community, whether it be prescription drugs, alcohol, or, in this case, mentoring for kind of that 5th through 9th grade is kind of what we're really targeting. And actually, the chat group has funded $4,000 toward marketing, and we're working with, like I said, Big Brothers, Big Sisters on that. And then the only other thing that I want to say is that Andrew has been working on a Rise Together event. That is gonna be a couple of speakers on heroin, and that's obviously been a problem here, increasing problem in the community. And they've been all over Wyegah, Manawha, Clintonville, I believe, and that'll be at the high school March 2nd. And we look forward to seeing the community there. And we've also had help from Officer Road Dens in the Police Department. He has, he's been, done a lot of legwork on that as well. And that is all I have.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. And Aaron's gonna be on a little bit later to talk about the Oz property, too, so we'll look forward to that. Chief Koch?
Mayor, outside of the report that's in your packet, I have nothing to add.
Thank you, Chief. Last but not least, the guy that just got back from San Diego, and actually came back from San Diego.
Talked to my brother this afternoon after dinner, and it's 70, high 70s out there, so it's okay.
Well, you're not there.
Yeah. Just, my report starts on page 20. I just have a couple of quick items. If you remember, a couple of months ago, you did authorize staff to pursue some proposals on updating our job descriptions. We did identify seven firms, and three of those firms submitted proposals. The department heads are kind of the working group that's gonna evaluate these proposals. We've got interviews set up in a couple of weeks, and I would suspect probably that last meeting in March, or certainly first meeting in April, coming forward to you with a proposal for you to consider on this. Secondly, and I don't need to go into a lot of excruciating detail, but there's a couple kind of internal things we're looking at, kind of to improve efficiencies. One is how we send our agendas out. We want to try to move to sort of a default position of sending them digitally, but we would work with folks if they don't have an email and those kind of things, to get paper copies. We also want to look into some different ways or different processes swearing people into office. That's always a challenge, you know, people's schedules are different, and it takes some effort to get that all buttoned up, so we're looking at some ways to maybe improve that. And then finally, the code of ethics. This past year, we updated the code, and every year in May, you guys see that thing twice or three times, and we think there might be a way to do it a little bit more efficient and maybe use a digital method to do that, where you can get in, read it, and maybe certify that you've seen it. Again, just ways to become a little more efficient in our processes for our kind of routine items. Last but not least, we did, do have the budget document up on the website for review by both the public and everyone in this room, if you need to. And I guess I'd like to direct everyone when you're reviewing the document to really kind of go to the goals and objectives section, because that's where all our department work plans are. And I think you'll see in there that there's a lot of ambitious tasks identified, and that is just what we know today, that we're gonna try to attempt to accomplish. And as being on council, you know, things just pop up through the year that's unintended, and we have to work on. But if you'll review those work plans, you'll see that there's a lot of good stuff in there. And if you have any questions on any of it, please just seek out the appropriate department head.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions of Henry, comments? All right, let's move on, then. We have, on our agenda, we have new business. We have the Humane Society of Wapaka County Annual Report in your agreement. How are we gonna handle this? I don't see Monica here, Henry, so...
Well, she got an agenda, didn't she?
I mean, yeah, so... Put it off for another meeting?
Well, we're operating under the same billing rate and things of that nature. It's just, you know, we...
All right, well, let's just put it off till the next meeting, and we'll continue the current contract until we can get, until we can get her here. All right, so we'll table that, and hopefully we'll have that on March 3rd. Okay, let's go to license report number 1264. This is a dance hall license. Again, you'll find this on page 181 of your packet. It's normal stuff here. Unless anybody has any comments, we would be looking for approval.
Move to approve license report number 1264.
Second.
Motion by Keeland and a second by Lockwood that we approve the license, license report number 1264, which is a dance hall license. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. License report number 1265, which is bartender's operator's license. We have three people on here. We don't have any additional letters here, so we have to assume that everybody has been checked out and good to go. So, unless council has anything, we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve license report 1265.
Second.
A motion by Hagan, second by Peterson, that we approve of license report number 1265. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Onto unfinished business. We have a request from Pastor Tyler Paul Wolf of the First Assembly of God Church for the Compassion Connection Fun Run on July 4th, and this is his second time here. Now, Henry, do you have anything to set up, or Brennan, or do we just go ahead and have him tell us what he found out?
Well, just, we did have a follow-up meeting, Chief Koch, myself, Kathy Leclair, and Terry Schultz in the chamber. We met a couple of weeks ago, and I think we've got something that's workable, but I'll...
Tyler, go over it.
Tyler? If you remember right, the issue was, of course, the parade line and the chief going through stop-and-go lights with the run, and it was gonna be difficult to monitor that and to police that, so that's why Pastor's back again to explain how we're gonna be able to do this better.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you for continuing to work with us on this event. We think it's gonna be good if it all works out. And we actually completely rethought the plan. Originally, it was gonna start and finish at First Assembly, heading up towards Main Street, turn around, come back. Now, we've, we have the idea to have it, the race, race's starting line will be at the staging area of the parade, and the race would start 10 minutes before the parade, head down Main Street, and I'm not sure if you all have the maps I included, but, so it'd head down Main Street, left on Lake, just like the parade, a right on School Street, a left on Royalton, a right on Churchill, and then we go over Columbia, 8th Street, Park, back to Churchill, over to Evans, and then that would travel down to Berlin, and the finish line would be at First Assembly. And so, the idea is that racers could come and pick up their race packet at First Assembly, and we'll have shuttles set up to bring them over to reduce traffic near the parade. Again, the race would start at 9:50, 10 minutes before the parade, and according to last year's numbers, I'd say racer, even our slowest racer would be clear of all parade area about 10 minutes, 10, 11, 12 minutes into the, into the race.
Comments? Chief, does this work for you?
It's just added costs, and we discussed that, and that cost is being passed on to Mr. Wolf's organization.
We understand that there'd be personnel costs for the extra, extra 10 minutes for the police and all that, and we're, you know, we're prepared to handle that.
Okay. Awesome. John Edelbeck, any concerns that you have?
Yeah, I wasn't in on the meeting, but no concerns.
Okay.
Are you planning to shuttle all the runners down there to start?
No, well, race communications for some, since there's so many moving parts and it's high traffic, we're gonna do a heavy race communications to our racers about picking up their packets the day before, planning to know where the starting line is, to reduce the amount of people that even need to be shuttled there. But yes, if this answers your question, will anybody that does need a ride, so they can park at the finish line and then need a ride from there to the starting line, will have, you know, a couple vans.
And how many runners are you anticipating?
I, last year, we had 30 racers. I anticipate we'll have more. I think once people hear about the partnership that we have with the parade, they'll, they'll jump at it. Two-thirds of our racers last year were tourists, you know, in from out of town, and people are excited about this race. And in the running community, 4th of July is a big day. A lot of people are looking for racists to run, so I anticipate there'll be more than 30 this year. But again, it's not, it's not the Boston Marathon. It's not, it's thousands of people.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. It seems like it's a good compromise from where we were last time, so unless council, anything council would like to add to this? Again, we'd be looking for a... Again, we'd be looking for a motion if that's something...
Maybe just, the only concern? Only concern might be people coming with their chairs and stuff, although it'd be pretty late, ten minutes before parade time, but trying to cross the street and the runners going. I suppose the police force would stop people from crossing the street when that pack of thirty or forty or whatever it is goes through. That's one thing I can think of that would be a problem.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, since our last meeting, um, you know, our smaller meeting before, we, we discussed how we'd handle that, 'cause I do understand that people are crossing the streets, getting so situated right up until the parade's starting. Um, and I thought we would have somebody on a bicycle out, you know, twenty feet ahead of the, the fastest runner, um, just some people coming. And again, we advertise this as a fun run. Um, no one's qualifying for the Olympics with our race. So, um, again, and like at the corners of the busy streets, we'll have race marshals there, not stopping traffic, but stopping runners from going into traffic. Um, and so we would have somebody out in front leading the way on that, and so people would see a large group, uh, 'cause the pack's pretty close that early on, where the parade is. So people would see runners coming, and, um, yeah, we anticipate that, but...
Brennan, you ready?
Uh, this is gonna, is this mainly on the roads, or are you utilizing sidewalks for part of this route too?
Well, on Main Street, we would, we would obviously be on the road. And then Evans, at the end of the race, is on the road. The rest of it, we tell racers, um, it's a fun run, please use the sidewalks.
Um, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Tim, do you know if the fire department, um, knows about this, or...
You know, I talked to Chief Olson a week ago, and he wasn't brought in on this yet, but he has someone else handling that, that they couldn't get to the meeting. Uh, that's assumed to be a requirement, I, because they have to man all those other corners. You're right. So I, I, I don't know. They, do you, can you answer that? They were supposed to be notified, and...
I can't know. I mean, if I could, tell me who I need to contact, I'll contact them.
Well, Chief Olson would be the one to contact, but, right, to begin with, and then...
Yeah, he had somebody else that was supposed to be at the meeting, Henry. Do you know who that was? Probably.
Oh, probably, okay, yeah.
He knew that he's a new parade marshal, parade coordinator.
Yeah, 'cause they do have to be brought in on this, 'cause they handle all the other corners that we can't downtown.
We can get you that phone number if you wanna...
That'd be great.
...call tomorrow. They'll get that for you.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve the fun run.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Fensky, that we approve of the Compassion Connection Fun Run on July fourth, two thousand fifteen, uh, starting on, uh, uh, Main Street. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Thank you.
Ordinance number zero one one five. This is an ordinance amending chapter nine point zero eight, parent four, parent A of the Wapaka Admissible Code as it relates to exceptions for fireworks display. This is actually our second reading, um, and we heard, uh, the changes at our last meeting. If there's anybody that needs clarification of that, uh, go ahead and ask, um... I don't know, has, uh, Clerk's Office heard from the public at all on this, uh, whether there's any issues? Okay. We'd be looking for a motion then to approve this ordinance.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve ordinance number zero one one five. Discussion? It's an ordinance, so we'll have Sandy call it over.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fensky?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And that's nine. Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move on then to, uh, presentation on the Oz Eco Park Project. Cliff is not here tonight, uh, but from CAP Services, but Aaron is, um, going to, uh, just present this and just tell us a little bit about what's going on. And I guess there's a few things that, uh, that we need to discuss too on that, so...
Yes. Mayor, I'm gonna, um, use the projector, if that's okay.
Thanks.
Okay. What you'll see on the overhead here is, or on the projector, is everything that you'll see in the packet. But I thought we'd put it up there, um, and I can talk you through some of the attachments, as there was, as there were quite a few. I kinda gave you guys a briefing and, um, a background on how this project came together. At the last meeting, I believe, or a couple of meetings ago, where Cliff approached the city, um, and, and there was a couple of locations discussed, and the Oz natural area was, was picked for various reasons. I won't dive into, to that portion of it, but I'll try to pick up, uh, where we kinda left off. Um, we have had a couple Oz meetings since, since that last time I talked, and actually, I, I was expecting Cliff here today. And he was gonna tell more about the actual components, um, inside the educational center that I cannot speak as intelligently about, um, so that will be left out of this. But I will talk to it, uh, the project and where we're at in general. A lot of it was in your memo, but on this map, you can see a couple different components to the project. And actually, the first one, the, the red dot you'll see with the open, that's labeled open air shelter, that's already begun. That is a small twelve by sixteen foot shelter that CAP Services and the Fresh Start Program has started, and if you drive by, you can see it's under construction currently. And they will continue to do that. All of the, the money and materials have been, uh, raised by CAP Services for that, and the materials actually were donated. Really, the big portion of the project that we're speaking of, um, and that this memo refers to is the Educational Center, which is located, uh, next to the parking lot, um, off of Constance Road there. Uh, the Educational Center is expected to be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project when you take in labor, uh, and material costs. This is estimated by Cliff and CAP Services. Uh, we got a budget sheet that's also a part of, um, your memo and the attachments that's, that's included, uh, that shows some of the, some of those material costs. What we discussed at our last Oz meeting, uh, was, according to our timeline, we had hoped to start this project sometime this spring with the Educational Center. Um, and after the Oz meeting discussed it, uh, or the Oz Committee discussed it a few times, they felt with a couple contingencies in place that they wanted to recommend moving forward with that, um, in the spring of this year. I will say that the Oz Committee, when they did make that recommendation, uh, did not see a budget. So they made that decision without seeing a budget, um, and some things have changed since that recommendation was made. And I think Oz, the Oz Committee would make a different recommendation, um, knowing what we know now. Uh, some of those contingencies, I just want to speak to. Uh, they're listed in your memo, but you can see here on the map that we have the parking lot expanded to the south. Uh, then what, what's currently there is just a small gravel parking lot, about, uh, maybe a sixth the size of the overlay that you see there. Um, one of the contingencies would be to not expand it, uh, to the south like that. Uh, the idea behind expanding it would be to allow for buses to come in, um, and be able to pull in and pull out possibly two buses, as this will be used by school districts in the area, in the county, that I'm gonna let kinda Connie speak to, as I see she's here, um, in a little bit. The reason we didn't want to expand that parking lot is, is kind of the overall thought, thought with this Oz property is that, kind of the less disturbance, the better. And that's all taken into consideration when we're talking about the open air shelter, the Educational Center. No concrete slabs will be poured, and, and really, you know, if school buses, if we're designing, it's strictly for school buses, we feel that they are designed to drop kids off on the street. I feel like we can do that safely, uh, and then there can be off-site parking, either in CAP Services or other locations, uh, that are around the area. Uh, the kids could be picked up after they were done using it. Uh, I've talked to John about a couple of these things, um, and I think the parking lot, if the Educational Center were to move forward in the future, the parking lot would be something that could be looked at being expanded if we felt it was needed after the Educational Center existed, um, for a period of time. You know, we, we kinda had the idea that we were gonna come to a meeting here in February or March and, and ask for council's approval to go forward with construction of the project. Since that time, um, I think there was some miscommunication, uh, within CAP Services on, on what grants, uh, were allowed to take, you know, what money was allowed to be used out of what grants. I do want to say, we, we have about a thirty-one thousand five hundred dollar shortfall in the estimated cost of this Educational Center. You know, I, I say we have a thirty-one thousand dollar shortfall, and I, that kinda puts a negative overtone on the project. And I think it's important to note that Cliff Morton and CAP Services have raised a hundred and twenty-five, approximately a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in a very, um, short amount of time. So although we're thirty-one thousand dollars short, um, you know, they've, they've done a lot of work to get to where they're at. And I know they do have a pending grant of twenty-five thousand dollars that they're in the interview process for right now, although that has not been secured. That would leave us about six thousand five hundred dollars short. Obviously, we do want, not want to recommend going forward with this project, until all money is secured, um, and that gives us some time to kinda discuss some other things, uh, as we move, as we move forward. I do want to talk about the other three contingencies that we haven't. Rental is exclusive to groups that use the site for environmental sustainability, educational purposes only. Uh, number three was, it is understood that if the Education Center was not used, uh, the committee would reconvene and discuss removing the improvements on site. Uh, number four, no money will be used from the Oz Property Fund or City of Wapaka. That's an important one to note right now, because, uh, you know, you look at that thirty-one thousand dollars that we are short, and the Oz Property Committee has about somewhere around forty thousand dollars in its fund. And you might be asking the question, is that, um, able to be used? Well, number one, this contingency, uh, suggested that we not do that. Number two, I think there's other priorities, uh, with the possible purchase of about thirteen acres, that has a river ridge trail running through it, just west of the Oz Park, um, that I think is a priority as well. So I would hate to deplete a bunch of money out of that fund and not have any money for, for other things that we've been discussing for, for a little while here. I'm gonna scroll down here. Uh, this is just kind of an overview of, um, what it will look like. Uh, this is gonna be a forty-six by, oh, hold on here, just make sure I have this right. Forty-eight by thirty-four foot, um, structure. Um, and then the, the porch is, the, you can see on the left there of the screen is kind of an open air shelter portion of it. That's twenty by thirty-four feet, uh, twenty feet by thirty-four feet. And then we also have, um, kind of the educational room, which is all enclosed, which you can see in the upper right hands of the plans, um, and then you can also see, uh, some composting toilets. Uh, that's one thing I kinda want to discuss with Cliff, and, and some other options, um, were brought to me this week. And, and I think that's a benefit of, I know we're, we're kinda putting off on this, but we can discuss some of that in more detail. The idea would be for these classes and, and school districts that do use this as an educational piece to, to obviously use some of the components that Cliff was gonna speak to you about within the Educational Center there, um, not only in the interior of it, but, uh, the, the open air porch, the, there'll be solar panels that would power a lot of it. Uh, the compostable toilets or whatever we decide to put there will have, um, some educational purposes to it. There will be stations outside of the Educational Center, um, and around the park that would also allow for learning to take place. Um, I'm gonna ask, I believe Connie Abert is here, um, and Connie did some work as far as going around to a bunch of school districts within the area, just to make sure that there was genuine interest on this project, and that they could, uh, see themselves using this as a part of their curriculum. And before I say too much about that, I will let, I will let her talk about that, if you wouldn't mind, Connie?
So, um, my name is Connie Abert. I work for the UW Extension Office. And, um, the grid work that you have, uh, that has all of our school districts listed on it, um, what we did, one of the things that was asked of our office was to actually go to the school districts and, and talk to them, and see if they would use this facility. And, um, as you can see, we were able to make a connection with each of the school districts that was, that were in, uh, Wapaka County. And what we found out is that they really did have some interest in this type of hands-on, um, educational piece. Some of you might be familiar with what's called the Next Generation, uh, Science Curriculum, ready to go back to school for, for some of the newest science stuff. And one of the pieces of that, uh, is actually about sustainable living, and also about renewable energy, um, as that is probably one of our, you know, biggest, uh, concerns, uh, for our future. And so a facility like this, um, most of the district administrators and most of the teachers were very interested. Now, we do have, um, and it was a very good question that was even asked, um, you know, within our Oz Committee, is we have, um, some very, we have some of our schools that have solar panels and have, uh, opportunities to learn about those in classrooms. But, um, this facility really gives a perspective of individual homeowners, um, more so than an industrial-type, uh, solar and renewable energy. So, um, every school district, the one school district that had a little bit of apprehension was Clintonville, because they are very close to Navarino, which is, um, like ten minutes away from the Clintonville School District. Navarino also has solar panels, but it doesn't have the other pieces of renewable energy. And, um, with this Next Generation Science Curriculum that's coming into all of our schools, that this piece would be a very good hands-on, no matter where this is built, or if it's even, you know, if there would be an opportunity like this in another part, it would be a great attraction. So there was, there was definite interest in that, so, unless there's any other questions. No? No?
Connie and Cliff deserve a lot of credit for that, they spent a lot of time meeting with administrators, teachers, department heads of science departments to find out if there was interest, and as you can see by that breakdown, that there was. I do want to talk a little bit about the budget, kinda in a little more detail. You can see kind of a lister that I received from CAP Services on material costs and estimated project costs. You've probably heard me talk about a grant that they received that was $188,000 from the Fox Valley Community Foundation. You're probably wondering, why can't that be used to cover the $160,000 total costs? And the answer to that is that there are specific things that they can use that $188,000 for. So they can use it for labor, all the labor, which is an estimated $80,000 within this project, and then they can use it for educational pieces. And I was, in original discussions, it sounded like, because Fresh Start crews are building it, that all the material could be used as educational pieces, and that's not true. Some of the materials that would be considered educational pieces are like the solar panels or some of the things that would be specifically educational after it was constructed. So that is what leaves us with that shortfall. There was also other grants that they felt that they could tap into. They have a grant called the Youth Build Grant that they've been using over three years. I think it's an $800,000 grant that they use for a number of programs, and after I spoke with a couple other people in CAP Services, they were not banking on dipping into that money. So they're gonna continue trying to fundraise and write grants for that additional money, and see where that gets them. I also attached the Restrictive Covenants, and that's just, that was written up when the donation was made and the Oz Committee was formed, and those are just kinda some bylaws and some rules that are attached to this park, and kinda shows what the Oz Committee has say over, and there's a mission of this park that is outlined in that as well, for those of you who are not familiar with it. And then this memorandum of understanding is something we drafted together. I took it over to John Hart's office today, we're gonna work through a couple things that might clean it up. The things that I want you to pay attention to on here are probably more of what our responsibilities would be, and what CAP Services' responsibilities would be if we move forward on this project. As you guys know, no taxpayer money would be used, all the fundraising would be through them, the construction would be through them, it would not be on our crews. And then the other big thing is maintenance, you know, we have a lot of parks, a lot of park acreage, a lot of facilities to take care of, and sometimes we feel it might take us a little longer to get to some of those things that need to be done than need be, and we always want to be cautious when we're adding facilities and adding land and adding things like that, and can we take care of it with our current crews? So, CAP Services has agreed to maintain the improvements that would be at Oz Park. If vandalism were to happen, they would be there to take care of that, and so on and so forth. Now, that is something that I'll be meeting with a number of people the first week of March from CAP Services on finalizing that and making sure that that still is the case, as some things have changed here in the last couple weeks. So that would all be finalized by the time I came back and asked for any approval through council here.
Aaron?
Yep?
Will they also cover insurance on the building?
Yes, they would. You know, this is, I think it's a great opportunity, the project is a great opportunity to have in our park system. Cliff has done great work to get it to this point, but there's just some things that need to be cleaned up before we move forward, and some things that I would like to see in place before we move forward. So, you know, as we sat here and a couple weeks ago, maybe we were planning on bringing this forward for approval for the beginning of construction. Things have changed in the last couple weeks, but I think it was still good to get it in front of you guys, so you could see it, think about it. If you have any questions over the next few weeks, feel free to contact our office and talk to me, I'd be more than willing to answer those questions. If I don't have the answer to them, I will find it out for you. And then when we do bring it back, if we do bring it back, that'll be something that is familiar in your guys' heads. So are there any questions for me at this point? Yes, Dave?
Maybe a couple, Aaron. You said you would charge probably, does that mean you'd charge the school districts to use it?
We would not charge the school districts to use it, no. For, no, we would not.
Would you charge, and who else is gonna use it?
Well, that's something we have to talk about, because one of the contingencies was that it would be only used for educational purposes, and we talked about this as far as rentals go. We talked about it being able to be rented. One thing we don't want is we don't want it necessarily being rented for weddings, and actually, Steve called me yesterday, pointed out the fact that he'd read in one document that there would not be alcohol allowed, and that's true, we talked about there not being alcohol allowed, although that wasn't in the memo, I don't believe. And, you know, that's not the idea of it. Now, we had talked about it'd be nice to have it be able, let's have it rented for, you know, if a Boy Scouts troop wants to come in and use it for a meeting or a 4-H or something like that, we don't want to have it off limits for those types of things. And that's something that, when it got approved through council, that could be discussed at that point, but that would, you know, I think rental fees could be applied for things like that, much like if they rent a meeting room at the rec center or...
So the rental fees would go to the city, not the cap?
That's correct.
Okay, second question.
Yep.
School district or whatever, whoever uses it, are those teachers from that school district capable of using the space without, or do we, does somebody have to provide a mentor or...
Yeah.
...facilitator?
Right. That's a good question, that's something we've gone back and forth with through the Oz Committee a little bit, and the idea is, is to have, kinda have those teachers engaged as we begin this process, and invite them and say, hey, what, we want to ask them, what can you use in your curriculum? What do you see being beneficial for your classes? And kinda bounce those ideas off of them and work with them to make it usable for each school district. I know CAP Services has said that they would have staff that would help run some things, and that's another thing in this meeting in March that I would like to discuss with them as well, because I think that it's very important to have qualified people doing that, so. Yeah, go ahead, why don't you come on?
We had, a couple years ago, we had, were able to designate 30 new school forests in the county for schools to use, and our UW Extension Offices are certified to utilize the DNR materials, Project Wet, Project Wild, Project Learning Tree, and KEEP, which is a UWSP curriculum, which goes very well with the Next Generation Science Curriculum. And so our office has made a commitment, like we did with those school forests, to do some training with the teachers utilizing KEEP, which is K-12 Energy Education Program, so to utilize that KEEP curriculum with the teachers. In the beginning, then after a facility is built, bring them back in with their classrooms, because if we can build the capacity of the teaching staff, which I think might have been the crux of your question, is then they can utilize this facility, and it won't take more staff time. So that is a pretty important piece, and we would be happy to do that, that would be a great outreach effort for our Extension Office, so.
Any other questions at this point?
I have a question.
Yes, Paul.
So once the new trail system, the extension is completed, anyone from the city can go out there and use the trail system?
Correct.
And the open-air shelter?
Mm-hmm.
Just not the new facility?
Right, the indoor facility would have to be rented, with whatever contingencies we had on that. But yes, the public could use all the other improvements.
Paul, we're not adding to the trail system, the trail is already there, these are...
I know, there's a section of boardwalk that's gonna be, that was gonna be constructed.
True, yeah, you're right.
I was referring to.
Okay, within the park, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Thanks, Aaron, and Connie, thank you for coming tonight, appreciate that, and we'll look forward to seeing how you, how this goes forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on then, or actually, to Communications Recommendations of the Mayor. We're getting close to election time, so, you know, that's in April, and remember, we're talking about, maybe some, we're talking about discussion on a Public Works Board, and that made me think again that this is the time of year where we should request citizens that have interest in serving on a committee or a board that we have to contact the Clerk's Office, or contact myself. Sandy, when does that, did it go in the newspaper already?
It's been in the paper, and our website.
Okay, so we do have a request in the newspaper, but I thought if council members, if you, or people that are watching tonight, know of people that are interested, that we have a number of committees that will have some vacant spots, and a lot of the people that have been on there are long, long-serving committee members, and although they'll continue to serve, they would like to maybe see some replacements also be on that committee. Anybody else have something good for the committee, for the council tonight? Need a motion to adjourn? Motion by Hackett, second by Hagan that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is March 3rd at 6:00 PM, subject to call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we are adjourned at 7:02 PM. Thanks, everybody, for watching and attending.